All right, it is recording Pam.
Okay, thank you. I will go ahead and call our school board meeting, our regular school board meeting to order. It's Monday, May 4th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. I will take roll call. Chair is here. Ms. Tower?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Derrick's.
Here.
Mr. Bryant.
Here.
Mr. Christensen. Is here. And Ms. Fair.
I am here.
Okay, thank you. Let's all rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. I've asked Mr. Christensen to share our vision this evening.
Right. The vision of the Red Wing Public Schools, the mission of the Red Wing Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students as they realize their full potential and become respectful, responsible, and productive citizens.
Thank you, Mike. Before we get into this evening's meeting agenda, I just want to go over a couple of things since we are still new at this Zoom meeting platform. If you could all have your phones close to you, because we do have a lot of people with us this evening and it's likely that one or more of us are going to get kicked out. And if that happens, our backup plan is for you to call in. There's a phone number that was listed on the invitation for this meeting. And so go ahead and call in if you do get kicked out. If I get kicked out, we're going to pause and give me about a minute to get back in to resume the meeting. If I can't get back in within, say, a minute, minute and a half, Arlen will take over as vice chair until I can get back in. I will also have my telephone handy. And if I can't get back in, then I will try to call in. So you will lose that visual of me. So have your phones handy, just in case you get kicked out. And we'll try and pause if you do, to give you a moment or two to get back in. And then we'll resume so that we can stay on track. I hope that makes sense for everybody. So you have your agenda hopefully in front of you. And do we have any changes or additions to make to the agenda this evening?
No changes Pam.
Okay. Then I will go ahead and ask for a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jim, seconded by Mike. Any other discussion or changes? Okay, then we have to go to a roll call vote. Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ms. Fair?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The agenda is passed. As always, we have our educational plan listed there in the agenda packet for your review. It reminds us again of what our vision and mission is, what our values are, and our strategic direction. Next on the agenda is recognitions and upcoming events. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share?
We love our seniors. And we wish them all the best and all of the celebrations that we have for our seniors. You're in our hearts all the time.
I did want to compliment. I'm not sure who exactly is doing the Facebook post for each senior, but I think that's just been fabulous. So thank you to whoever has been doing that, because I think it is a great way to publicly personalize it for every student. So thank you.
And I'll just add.
Go ahead, Jim.
I'll just add, it's nice driving around seeing the signs in the yard for seniors. And I'd called, I'd received a call about senior, what we're doing for seniors. I emailed the chair and the superintendent about flags. I never heard back as to anything more on that or what we're doing with it. So maybe during the meeting at some point, can we, can we get us all informed as to what we're looking at for graduation, how we're treating seniors, what we're doing? Because I know I'm not having, I'm not aware of what we're doing and maybe others aren't either.
Right.
Um, can I go or did somebody else want to go?
Go ahead, Holly.
I just wanted to do a huge shout out to teachers. It's Teacher Appreciation Week. And I know that our principals are very grateful for all of the hard work that they've done in this distance learning. And as a school board member, I'm very proud of them as well. So shout out teachers. Way to go.
I think we can all get behind that, Holly. Thank you. I was happy to see it's Teacher Appreciation Week. And today I got to see most, if not all, the Burnside teachers parading past my house. They went on a community-wide parade through town. And they came up here in our neighborhood. And there was a lot of kids in the neighborhood that got out on the corner and were waving. And all the teachers had signs on their cars, and they were waving. And some had balloons, some had bubbles. It was really great to see. All the kids were so excited to see the teachers. And so thanks for whoever put that together, because that was really fun, especially as the start of Teacher Appreciation Week. That was super fun. Just one more thing, a couple more things. Thank you to so many teachers and parents and community members who made signs for every single senior. This last week, we had cap and gown pickup for both the high school and Tower View. And so there was a group of volunteers who went ahead and made named signs for every single senior. And we had volunteers that came and put the signs on stakes and then put them up in the driveway. So as the seniors came up to pick up their caps and gowns, they were greeted with a sign with their name on it. And I know that Tower View students, same thing for them. So that was pretty special. And thank you to the volunteers for that. And go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna say, do we want to shout out to the bun man?
Yeah, that was my next question.
Yeah, the cake guy?
Yeah.
Way to go, Bill.
Huge supporter of our community and our school. So thank you, Billy.
Yes, he said something about cakes, seniors. Do you know about that?
I do.
Yes. So way to go, bun man.
He is donating a seven-inch cake to all of our graduating seniors, which is really great. And then he put the call out to other school districts in our area. And I believe that there are so many school districts around our area, Goodhue, Prescott, Ellsworth, I think it went down to Zambroda, Wabashaw Lake City. There are donors that have actually sent in money and are, he's able to provide free cakes to all of those seniors. All you have to do if you're a senior is to call in and order your cake, and he will make that happen for you. So not only thank you to Mr. Hanish, but also many, many donors who have come forward to make that happen for our seniors in this area. So that's really great.
Pam?
I'd like to add that, oh, go ahead, Heidi.
Okay. I just wanted to recognize all students. I know that seniors have a deservedly big focus right now. But I've had a few conversations this week where some students are doing really well, some are doing better than they have before, some are not doing as well as they did before. Some of our even elementary school students are providing daycare for younger kids in the household. So I just want us to recognize that there's a wide spectrum of student experience right now. And, and I'd like to be able to say that we need to support all of them. And I'm sure we're doing that. But just to realize that there is a certain amount of struggle in this. And I'd like to recognize the students for carrying on as best they can.
Well said, Heidi. Absolutely.
I know we've had, of course, we have numerous education assistants helping with our childcare program and custodians. And one thing I'd like to point out, though, today is our food service served 100,000 meal, meals since March 13th, I think. And so we have food service workers as well as numerous paraprofessionals and bus drivers who've been involved in that effort. So congratulations to them. I know the commissioner of the MDE, Minnesota Department of Education, was trying to reach Donna, you know, to kind of recognize, you know, their work, because it was Food Nutrition Day on Friday. And so hopefully that connection took place. We also had great coverage from the Republican Eagle as well.
Thank you, Carson. And I also want to give a shout out to our own Aelyn Hanson. She's been recently honored as the 2020 Brave New Girl Award from the Red Wing Branch of the American Association of University Women. I sent out a picture of her and her award to our school board just a little while ago. But that's a pretty great honor. And so congratulations to Aelyn.
Yeah, I'll, I'll jump in there, too. I was the person who was able to award Aelyn with her glass vase and, and some monetary award, too. In her nomination form, it says that Aelyn is not only active at a high level in youth and government, but I think what sent her application over the top, in addition to being a student school board member, was she has been working with the city for several years now in developing a youth commission. Aelyn, we have a youth commission now at the city level. And Aelyn is the chair of that. And they expect to do more work over the summer. And naturally, they've been derailed since the COVID outbreak. But I was really impressed with Aelyn for sticking with this project for a long time. They're working on getting voting rights for the kids that would serve on boards and commissions and helping to put that program together. So absolutely, Aelyn's a dynamic young woman. And I, I'm sure she's going to be a change-maker now and in the future.
No doubt about it. Any other recognitions and upcoming events? All right, seeing none. I will move on in our agenda to public comment. I have not received any emails for sharing of public comment. We've certainly gotten a lot of group emails, nothing that's come forward that they've wanted me to share publicly here tonight. But again, if anybody has public comment, we'd ask that you send me an email at least two hours prior to the start of our school board meeting. I'd be happy to share your email with everyone. And so please make sure that if you have something you'd like to bring forward, email me at PJROE@rwpss.org. That address is also listed on our school website. So we'd love to hear your public comments. Feel free. All right, school board reports. Who would like to start first?
I don't mind going if that's okay.
Please do.
Earlier today for the personnel committee, and I'm just looking over my notes, but we did discuss FML leave, LA leave between spouses and how that would work. Also, just long-term substitutes. And again, some discrepancy in when there's variances made and different positions taken on as substitutes and long-term subs. And then we had a very long discussion on, on spring coaches. And I believe our recommendation will come, Carson, I think, the 18th, I believe. But we just discussed kind of what pay should look like then in the spring. So a really good discussion about that. But yeah, and then we finally did have a teacher that also joined us, just a discussion about our observation and teacher evaluation processes and kind of a non-renewal discussion about him. So that was our personnel committee.
Now that my mic is turned on, I'll do the finance committee. I'll even turn on my camera so you can see me.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah. We talked about financials. Lovely, lovely talk that was. We had the food service summary, community service fund summaries. Enrollment, we're down five and a half students from the prior month, which is an impact on our income. We talked about concern over students enrolling in online schools, either starting next year, and what kind of impact that might have on our, on our revenue. We're talking with other Big Nine schools, but haven't had any, any solid plans yet. Carson will update us on that, I'm sure, when anything comes more solidified. To talk a little bit about the impacts we are seeing from the COVID-19, community service had a, had a fund balance of around $260,000. And it looks like we'll be using almost all of that to, for all of the other things that we're doing and not getting revenue in for the community service. We talked about future financial projections. People are concerned with the decrease in revenue and sales taxes and income taxes and all those lovely things from coming into the state. That the legislature might be reluctant to maintain what we were hoping would be 2% increases in revenue each year. So we're looking at changing our projections. We're not certain exactly what we'll do with that. We'll probably get the 2% next year, because maybe it's too late for the state to change that. But in the coming years after that, we could well be down to 1% a year or even nothing, 0% per year revenue increases, which will drastically impact the promises that we made with the referendum that we, our community passed in support of our school. We spent an additional, oh, $370,000. Now, that's just the lease on the Chromebooks. But we, with the COVID coming in, we purchased 185 hotspots, $3,700 for that at a monthly cost. So that's a total of $44,000 per year. The devices were nearly $14,000. We looked at savings and substance and lost revenue. Our food service is getting a little bit more revenue in due to the lunches and breakfast that we're serving, projected to add a fund balance of 49, nearly $50,000. But then the costs for our Kids Junction staff is, let's see, net, well, anyway, the net projected loss to our fund balance from COVID so far is projected to be around $265,000. So these are significant numbers impacting our revenue in a, in a business that doesn't, is not able to increase revenue. And that's a large reason why we'll be looking at reductions tonight. It's better for us to reduce now or plan on reducing rather than making promises that we can't keep to people. And I just want people to keep that in mind. We've been getting a lot of emails from people supporting or supporting the staff. And we have business to take care of tonight that a lot of people aren't happy with. But like I said, mostly it is to give a, to give ourselves breathing room, because if we made the promise to keep these levels that they're, where we at currently, we would potentially be losing, putting ourselves behind the eight ball much further than the unknowns that we don't know with COVID-19. So these, anyway, we can talk about that when we, when we get to it. But it's a, it's a pretty bleak picture, especially the future funding for schools. And what more can you say? We don't know if the feds are going to step in and give any money to states and local communities, schools. It's all going to be borrowed money. So even if they do. So that's where we're at. That's the lovely picture from the finance committee.
I have a little bit more information from MSBA.
I'm good.
Concerning finances. And again, it really isn't certain information. It's not clear when we're going to get it. But there is, there are two pots of federal money. One is called the G E E R Fund or Gear Fund. And the governor has discretion on how that's spent. And that's emergency support for local education agencies or school districts. But we really don't know what the governor will decide on that. The thinking right now or the talk out there is that it would most likely be spent on expanding distance learning, possibly, if this goes further into the future, say, next fall, and to address some equity issues that we have concerning the technological divide in this state. So we have that divide in our community, as you reported, Mike, about we had to purchase some hotspots for families in order to continue educating their children. So that's one pot of money out there. I have no idea when those decision deadlines are. But just to know, that's a $43 million pot there. There's also a $142 million pot. But that's tied to Title I and Free and Reduced Rate Kids Program. So again, that's probably more likely going to center on what are your free and reduced population numbers look like. And again, I, we don't know when that decision will be made. We can guess maybe how much we might get, you know, per child, per student. But those are, those are some unknowns out there also.
Heidi, is that state money or federal money?
Federal money, I was told.
Good.
Thank you, Mike and Heidi. Anything else from finance? How about operations? Any update from operations?
All right. We met tonight and continued our discussion on raising meal prices for the upcoming school year. That'll be coming out of the future meeting. There'll be a 10 cent increase in meals for the regular noon lunch. I think there was a 5 cent increase on breakfast and 5 cents on milk, but we'll get that later. Or somebody else has that number for sure. They can clarify it. Kevin presented a list of costs of upgrades and repairs for the summer of 2020 and 2021 for us. Obviously, the 2021 will be looked at a little bit more in the future meeting. Also was, we were informed that we have changed cell phone provider from Verizon to T-Mobile, T-Mobile for sizable savings to our district. And they, I think we had roughly 35 cell phones that our district used right now. So that's a summary. Didn't have time to prepare much more here for tonight. Maybe other board members can chime in on that from the operations.
That's pretty much what we covered. A few questions at the end, so.
We talked a little bit about the technology with Synergy and Google Classroom and from Kevin's perspective, how those two are reading each other in terms of teachers being able to do grades quickly and without a lot of complex, complexity in terms of having to put a grade in one system and then the other system not recognizing it and making it ultra confusing for parents and children and the teachers. So we had, Kevin said he was going to look into that.
Because as I understand it, the teachers right now are spending a lot of time trying to get the grades in and make them user-friendly. Is that right, Holly?
Uh, yeah, there, we have some teachers who are spending a tremendous amount of time on their own, trying to figure out a system that isn't, wasn't designed for it to be used this way. So when we enter our grades into one database, when we opened it up to Google, Google Classroom, we were anticipating they would read each other, but they're not. And so teachers are spending a tremendous amount of time going back and forth, putting grades into one system so the other system can read it and vice versa. And I want to give a shout out to those teachers who are going above and beyond. Thank you.
Hopefully, we'll have a fix for them shortly. I know that Kevin will be on that. So thank you, Holly, for letting us know about that. And Arlen and Jim, anything else on personnel, finance, operations, legislative?
I, I'd like to jump in a little bit as the community ed rep. Community ed has their fingers on a lot of different programs. And here's just a couple of highlights. We, the advisory council was updated recently by Dawn. Drivers ed is resuming today through teleconferencing instructed by Tower View teacher Josh Nelson. Decisions about opening Red Wing Water Park should be coming in the next couple of weeks. Again, if we were to open and that, I don't know, you know, that's not my decision. But in the normal cycle of things, we'd be hiring staff at this point. And so that's, that's in play. I already gave you a Cavo update. You know, other activities under the community ed umbrella, or their park naturalists, they're, you know, changing to virtual platforms as much as they can. Still working on, Live Healthy Red Wing is still working on a nature play area in the East End neighborhood. So that timeline has changed. So everything, again, we're just keep updating, updating, updating. And of course, Kids Junction has risen to the challenge and provided what the community needed to do to take care of the kids of the tier one and tier two workers. So just, just briefly, that, you know, the same story that we have a lot going on and a lot changing. And they're, they're keeping up as best they can, too. Just quickly from MSBA, the summer seminar has been, is, was usually like the first or second weekend in August. That has been changed to a virtual platform also. I don't know exactly what that looks like. But usually, the summer seminar is focused on equity issues. I believe that's a, we need to have a stronger discussion in this district about equity pieces. And then recently, two student scholarships, student school board member scholarships were awarded to two fantastic individuals. And I chair the committee for MSBA on that. So it's always really great, inspiring work to see all the good things that our kids are doing. Unfortunately, none in our area. But we do recognize kids all over the state.
Anything else on legislative and policy, Heidi?
Uh, no, not at this time. We're tentatively, tentatively discussing what might the future look like, since everything's kind of on hold here. Normally, the legislature would be trying to finish up its work in a couple of weeks. I'm, I'm not sure if that deadline is still in play. There has been some talk of a couple of special session days in order to cover what they need to, since they've had this interruption with COVID. And it's kind of refocused their work in a different direction, perhaps. So that's kind of it. We'll be working on student handbooks, I think, over the summer. And that might look differently, too. And we have some other handbook pieces we need, we also need to look at. And we're starting our policy review. We completed the 100s, I think, and we'll be moving on to the 200s and the 300s.
Do you mind if I jump in quick, Heidi?
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
Yeah. Just so the board is aware, there's a policy, the 1,000 series possibly, it's at the end of our policies that hasn't been revisited since 2011, based on our Office of Civil Rights complaints. And so we're taking a look at that again to make sure that that is current and that we're addressing things in real time. So I just wanted everyone to know that we are also taking a look at that.
Good.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other committees that would like to give an update?
If I might step in, Pam?
Go ahead.
County Education District, we met on Wednesday, April 22nd. We approved the virtual meetings due to COVID-19. The board chair had discretion to do it, but we formally adopted that as a board. If people want to view, they got, Goodger County. If people want to view the Goodyear County Ed District meeting, they can contact the Goodyear County Ed District. Then they will give you the information, how you can monitor the meeting as it's going on. We approved the change and with a memorandum of understanding for speech pathologists, speech language pathologists, similar to what they have for psychologists. And they have a hard time hiring these two different positions. In the past, we did have the psychologists under this memorandum of understanding with the teachers. It allows the Ed District to pay an additional five thousand dollar signing bonus to hire somebody to join the Ed District on their first year. It was spread out payments throughout the year. And retention is an issue for them. So then the second year, it goes to sec, ten thousand dollar additional amount of money spread out during the year. And fifteen thousand for the third year. And twenty thousand for the fourth year, spread out through the year, through year ten, and then twenty-four thousand. So in order to be competitive with the marketplace for these highly skilled professionals and have them available, they've had to go to these type of measures to get the funding to hire these type of people. The other item that I'm very disappointed about since last December, previously I was putting draft minutes, which were required by bylaws to be prepared within five days of the meeting, in our board packet so you could review those draft minutes. They were not official minutes, but they gave you an opportunity to be, see what took place at the meeting. After a few months of meeting and discussion, unfortunately, the Ed District decided against my, my vote, that they were going to amend the bylaws to no longer require draft minutes to be prepared within five days of the meeting. I am available. I find that they said that times have changed. It's, uh, hard for them to do that. And that I am able, as a board member, to get what's called, trying to think of what the term is, a minutes report. And it's available to Ed District members that have a password for the board. It is not, from what I can see, available to the public. I am not very happy about it, but that's where I'm getting my report from here. I actually think it's a violation of open meeting law to make it available to all board members and not the public. I'm sure I'll hear some repercussions for putting this out to you. I feel it's totally wrong. And I guess we'll see where things continue on that. But at this point, board members are able to access these minute notes and then prepare our report to give to you. So that's where I'm at on the Ed District at this time. Next meeting is May twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Arlen. Any other reports? Okay, seeing no other reports, I do see that in our School Board Agenda Packet, there are a number of COVID-19 talking points and impact worksheets. Carson, do you want to say anything about any of those?
I think Mike Christensen probably covered that material pretty well. It talks about the reports for our budget projections for food service, community education, and general fund. But if you have any questions, we, Jackie or I could answer them now.
Does anybody have any questions on any of those? Okay, seeing none, then I will ask you, Carson, to go ahead and move to the Administrative Report.
Each meeting, I do include a summary of the implementation of our education plan. So folks can review that document on the website. I won't go over that item by item at this time. You know, I'm, I'm here available to answer any questions about COVID-19. But first, I'd like to have George Nimminich join us to talk about plans for graduation, including the signs or the banners.
Yeah, so thank you, Carson. So just to go back, I just want to, first of all, let you know, this whole discussion about graduation really started when, when we went into sheltering and had school canceled. Of course, the question was what to do in this situation. And a lot of school districts obviously are in the same boat. And we're trying to figure out what, what's the best plan of action. A lot of different, different plans have been put out there. We, we discussed possibly delaying our graduation into July and/or August. The, the issue that kept coming back was we don't know what July and August are gonna look like. And to delay our plans and then possibly not be able to do something to celebrate our seniors and their graduation, just didn't seem like it was a, a risk we wanted to take. So instead, we talked about what we could do, given our, we have a very traditional and beautiful ceremony that we do every year. And we really felt like we could do that. Everything that we normally do in a graduation, we can do virtually. And so that's why we wanted to put together a virtual graduation presentation. And we discussed how to do that. We landed on the idea of using a production company to help us with that. And so we have decided to use Flight Creative Media. It's a, a production company out of the Twin Cities. It's actually owned and run by former Red Wing High School grads. So they get the graduation traditions that we have. They are two thousand and six grads of the, of Red Wing High School. And so we were very, very excited. We had a nice talk with them about what we could do. And so we're basically moving forward with, with the plan to have graduation. Kind of, most of what we're doing is gonna be set up ahead of time so that we can present a, a finished presentation on June fifth at seven PM for the community. The, the, the other thing we also talked about is, spring obviously has a lot of events that are tied with it. It's the, the culmination of the school year, you're in May, you've got a lot of different events. We did have to cancel some. We are, we're kind of holding on, but really more than likely prom won't happen. Although we do have a scheduled, a rescheduled date of May thirtieth. But we're gonna have to make a call by this Friday as to whether we can move forward with that or not. And I, I think we're probably gonna have to cancel that. We, we do have some other big spring events that are important to our, our school and obviously our community. And those would be our Senior Awards Night and our Activities Night, Activity Awards Night. And we're gonna combine those, again, working with this production company, Flight Creative Media, to, to put on a virtual production of that as well. And so that's gonna take place on Wednesday, the twenty-seventh. And so to set all this up, obviously, it's gonna take some work. And I'm gonna be honest with you, it's a lot more work than it would be to run a normal graduation. But to us, our 2020 graduates are worth that and we are going to be moving forward. So I'm gonna give you just a quick timeline of what we're doing. Basically, starting May eleventh, which is next Monday, we are going to be inviting our seniors in. In fact, we just sent out invitations today for our seniors to come into the high school a few at a time and be videotaped in cap and gown, receiving their diploma, throwing their cap, et cetera. We are inviting our senior, they, our seniors can invite up to four family members to share in this moment and also have their picture taken with their families in front of the eagle in our locker bay. We also will be taping at this time, videotaping our seniors who might be receiving awards for scholarships and our senior, our class, our, our department awards, departmental awards, or activity awards that they might be receiving. So that we can put that together for our, our Senior Awards Night and Activities Night. So that's gonna take place between the eleventh and the twenty-second. And then the week of May twenty-sixth through the twenty-ninth, our speakers will be videotaped giving their speeches. And by, we want to finish all that up by the twenty-ninth. That's when our, when Flight Creative Media decided that they needed, that was kind of their deadline to be able to put something together for the, the fifth of June. On the twenty-eighth, we've been working in conjunction. I have to tell you that this has been kind of a really, a neat part of our, our process here, has been working with our community. As many of you know, we have some very interested and connected community members to our school. And they're very much wanting to be a part of the graduation process, understanding that our seniors kind of got dealt a bad hand here and they want to help out. So I want to give a lot of credit to our Downtown Main Street Red Wing for coming up with some ideas about what they can help with. And Carson mentioned the banners. I think Jim talked about that at the very beginning of the evening. So they are putting together some banners that will have each graduate on, will have a banner that will be hanging downtown. And they're, they're working on that right now. They also want to, on the twenty, May twenty-eighth is a tentative date for a parade for the graduates downtown. Again, this is being organized by Downtown Main Street and in conjunction with Red Wing High School, of course. And if we can't do the twenty-eighth, and I'll know more tomorrow because we're meeting tomorrow morning again. We have a committee that's been meeting every Tuesday morning. We may, we have a possible rescheduled date of, of Thursday, the fourth of June. So we're hoping to have that parade as well. And of course, June fifth at seven PM, we want to present our, our virtual graduation. That will be via YouTube. It'll also be on the district website and other media outlets to be determined. So that's kind of where we're at right now with the the planning of our graduation and some of our spring events.
Thank you, George, for the update. I, I think considering the circumstances, it sounds like a very good plan.
Yeah, we're, we're really excited about this. And, and like I said, I can't thank the community enough. There's a, a ton of people in town who are all former graduates of Red Wing High School who are, are doing their best to make, and, and I think Billy Hannish was one of them who was mentioned earlier. But there's, there's business owners throughout the community right now who are, who are doing some really special things for our, our seniors. And I just want to make sure we're, we're recognizing that, that effort. And we will continue to as the spring continues here.
And George, I spoke last week with Paul, who I know is a member of your committee on graduation. We talked just briefly about how school board members have traditionally been involved in handing out those diplomas. Can you speak to that a little bit? I know that that's a very special piece for this group to be able to participate in. And so I'm hoping you'll be able to utilize us for that in some way, shape, or form.
Yes, we, we definitely want to obviously have our, our school board a part of this. And so the, we were looking at the, the week of the twenty-sixth. So that would be Tuesday, the twenty-sixth of May through the twenty-ninth was gonna be kind of our timeline to, to try to get our, our videotaping of all of the dignitaries that go up on stage and, and the speakers who will be speaking to do their, their videotaping on, in that timeframe there. And hopefully take care of all that stuff at that time so that that can be a part of the presentation. The nice thing about doing this virtually is that we really have, we, you know, the nice thing is, I guess you can make mistakes and you can redo. You know, like you wouldn't have that if we were live, but that's, that's the beauty of this right now. So, but that is something that we're hoping to do. It won't take a lot of time and effort filming because we're going to be, I mean, the, Flight Creative Media basically talked about a way, they're using a green screen behind the speakers. So it'll be kind of a, we'll, we'll get some filming done, but it's not gonna have to take long periods of time to get that done, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, our schedules are super busy right now. And so we want to make sure that we have some time carved out in that week. So if you could let us know just when we're needed, so we can get that in our schedules, that'd be great.
Yep, that, definitely, that's on the docket for this week. We're hoping to get information out to people that we need to come in so that we can prepare that portion of the, of the presentation, absolutely.
I don't know about any of you, but it'd be kind of fun to be a part of that parade in some way, shape, or form, too, so.
Yep, thanks, George, for the, all the work on it and keeping us informed and bringing us up to speed as to what we're looking at doing as a district and what you're doing with your team. Thank you.
You bet, Jim.
Absolutely.
It's fantastic. And I just sent you all information on, a little bit more information on that Downtown Main Street Adopt a Flag. It looks like they're looking for donors that can help with those flags. So for the public out there watching, if that's something that you're interested in, I know that Downtown Main Street is looking for some donations so we can have every single senior represented on a flag downtown. So that's great.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Can we put that link that you just sent us by text on our website? So if people hear about this, they have a place, another place to go look for it?
Yes, I will double check with Megan Sui, but I'm sure that that is something that can be added there, a nice, easy link.
And then our newsletter each week that goes out on Sunday nights, too, would be a nice spot for it to be plugged in also.
Yes. I will make a note of that.
Thank you.
Anything else, Carson?
Uh, that's all I have unless there are some questions for me.
Okay, seeing none, then I will move on to our Consent Agenda. Anybody have anything that they'd like to pull from the Consent Agenda? Okay, anyone?
I'll make a motion to accept the Consent Agenda as presented.
Looking for a second?
Second by Mike.
Thank you, moved by Heidi, seconded by Mike. Any other discussion on that? Okay, I'll take a roll call vote, starting with Mr. Derrick's. We'll come back to that. Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ms. Fair?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's?
Aye, sorry, my mic was slow to turn on.
No worries, it passes seven to zero for the Consent Agenda, has been passed. Okay, donations and grants.
I'd like to thank Michael Murphy and the Community of Christ for their donations for the food service program, especially for COVID-19 services.
Absolutely, thank you. Looking for a motion to approve the attached resolution accepting donations and grants.
Jim says, uh, second.
Wait a minute, what was that?
Lot.
Um, I believe I made the motion for, to accept the donations.
Thank you, Janie, second.
Hi, Jim.
Motion by me, Janie, seconded by Jim. Any other discussion?
You know, I just had a quick question for Carsten or others on that, you know, just that it's noted that it is for COVID-19 in the food program. I mean, are we actively asking for donations, or is this something that we should be communicating to other people if there is a need? Or I guess, you know, I didn't know that we were asking for donations, just to be honest. So I think it's fantastic and thank you to these people, but if others wanted to donate, who do they contact, or where do they go?
Yeah, I think they just volunteered to, to make the donations themselves. We didn't go out to solicit that, but they were thinking of us during this time and all the great work that our food service workers and, and education assistants have been doing. That, that's my take on it.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so I'll take a roll call vote to accept this, starting with Ms. Jones.
You started with me last time, so we need to change the rotation.
That's right, I started with Arlen, but he was slow in the uptake. Ms. Tower?
Now, aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ms. Fair?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
All right, that passes seven, zero. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is non-renewals.
So we, the administrative team has three suggested teachers for non-renewals for the coming year. Once again, they are all eligible to reapply for positions, but there's no guarantee that they would be offered employment. So the, the principal of each building made the recommendations to me, and so that's why they're added on the agenda. For Burnside, I'm the one who had to make that recommendation. And so the, the first, by the way, we should do each one of these separately. The first resolution which is attached is relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract of Kim Lodermeier, a probationary teacher.
Looking for a motion on that resolution for non-renewal.
So moved by Mike.
Moved by Mike, second.
Heidi Jones, second.
Any other discussion?
Just a question, Madam Chair.
Yep.
How long has Kim Lodermeier been a teacher with us?
Oh, I believe it's a year or two, but I, I don't know offhand for sure.
And this is just standard because of that? They're new?
Yeah, with Minnesota teachers, if it's their first place of employment in Minnesota as a public school teacher, they get three years of probation. And so when they're offered a fourth year, then, you know, they receive tenure. And that's true unless we've extended the probationary period time. And so each one of the teachers there is still within that probationary period of time.
Okay, thank you.
Did I understand you saying, Carsten, that we can extend somebody's probationary period?
Yeah, we can. It's not recommended very often, but there are times when it makes sense to extend it to a fourth year.
Okay, good to know. Any other discussion on Ms. Lodermeier? Non-renewal, okay, it's a roll call vote, so this time I'll start with Ms. Fair.
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, passes seven to zero. Next person is Sarah Altman, who is a Burnside Elementary School Special Ed teacher.
I'll make the motion for non-renewal for Sarah Altman.
Janie made the motion?
Mike, second.
Seconded by Mike. Any discussion? All right, I'll take a roll call vote, starting with Mr. Christensen.
Did you get that?
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ms. Fair?
Aye.
Okay, that passes seven, zero. The next person relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract for Inanna Antley, a probationary teacher, second grade teacher at Burnside. Any discussion?
I'll make the motion for non-renewal, termination of Inanna Antley. Heidi Jones.
I'll second it, Janie. I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Okay, then I will call for roll call. Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ms. Fair?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes seven, zero. And then finally, we have Twin Bluff Middle School, seventh grade math teacher Nathan Weiss, up for non-renewal, in terms of termination and non-renewal of his teaching contract. Any discussion?
I guess I'll ask a question if I may, Madam Chair.
Yes, please, yep.
We've obviously received some emails and related to, I don't know, don't know, do not know Mr. Weiss at all, haven't had the pleasure to meet him or his wife. Question though, came up, I'd like to know, he's a third, this is his third year, I believe, somebody, I think you mentioned that earlier, Pam, when we talked, and then has he had, what is his, what's, what's the requirement for number evaluations for probationary teachers annually? And has that been met?
And this is his fourth year, because his probation was extended by a year. The, typically, each probationary teacher has three teacher evaluations done each year by a licensed administrator. This year's different. The state directed us to stop evaluating as of the first date of distance learning. And so we have not done evaluations for any teacher after that date, but that's because of the directive of the governor.
Sure, so how many did they have this year, this school year?
You know, I don't know offhand. I know I talked to Chris Palmetiere about this issue. I believe he had two or three, but I, I don't know for sure. I know one concern that was expressed is, is the fact that there have been multiple evaluators of Nathan, probably of, of some other teachers too, but in particular of Nathan. You know, Chris Palmetiere was, was out of, was working half-time for a period of time this year, and so Beth Borgan stepped up and Jen Grove stepped up to help with evaluations for all teachers. And so there were some concerns expressed about having different people evaluating, you know, the same teacher.
Carsten, was there a formal action plan with steps for this teacher to take to show growth? And if so, have you seen it?
I have not reviewed it. I relied on Chris Palmetiere's advice and recommendation. What happens with probationary teachers is that, you know, there are evaluations done, feedback given, and then with each year, the teacher professional growth plan, there are goals that are to be set, and then, you know, the teachers are evaluated based on progress towards those goals.
Do you know if this teacher had a mentor assigned?
Uh, yes, he did.
If I could add to the conversation too, I just wanted to respond to Jim's question, and this is just off of, of Mr. Weiss's own communication with us, but it looks like two observations were conducted with a third not happening because of online learning. So I just share that first, since all of us on the personnel committee had that, I believe. I don't know if everybody got that, but I just looked it up, and that's from, from Nate's perspective. I mean, I don't, you know, I don't know if the district would confirm that or not, but I just wanted to share that too.
Yeah, and that would be consistent with the expectations that the governor did with distance learning.
Just because I feel like I need more information on his situation in particular, I feel like at this point I cannot go ahead and support his non-renewal, so I will be voting no, but I would be happy to entertain a motion for his termination on renewal, unless there's more discussion.
I don't have, I don't want to, I have a little bit more discussion, I guess. I think Holly hit the nail on the head a little bit on an action plan written out over the years. I've done evaluations. If there's a, and we do evaluations annually, however many times you need to do them, but if there's an issue that comes up that needs to be addressed, you, you lay out an action plan within the timetable, and you go over that in written documentation where the employer has that, the employee has that, and there's expectations met or expected to be met, and during that time, there's documentation, document, 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 and then at the end of the time, the employee either successfully completes that plan or does not, and then steps are taken such as this here to either non-renew, relieve, let him resign, terminate, whatever. So I, I agree with you, Madam Chair. I'm not comfortable voting yes for something I don't have much information on. I think for us to make a sound decision, we need as much information as, as available to everybody, and I'm not sensing we're, we have that all tonight, so I will be joining you in voting no.
I will be joining you also, Madam Chair.
Can I ask, I just have a question, Carsten. Do we have any other options here? And I don't know if we need to have a, a motion in a second before we, or if others are, but, um, do we have any other options here? Is a fifth year of probation an option, or, you know, because I would remind, I never, I want administrators to do their job, that's why we hire them, but I didn't know if we had other options, because sometimes there are and some doesn't, or not, but if we did not, if we did something different than what, you know, we have presented here, this staff member would be tenured, and our options would be very different in other years. Is that correct? And, or can you?
Yeah, I've never, I've never heard of a Minnesota school offering an extension to five years of probation. I think that would be unprecedented. So my preference would be one or the other. Either terminate, non-renew, or, you know, accept it and then tenure Nate. Of course, kind of a third option, which will lead to one of the other two options, would be to delay it for two weeks so that we can, you know, compile some of the information that you've talked about today, and then we can make a decision on May 18th. And I'd be fine with that, too.
My question, Carsten, is for, if this was, he was in his fourth year, what prompted the additional year of, of probation? I should have asked that in the, in the personnel meeting, but I wasn't cleared in that meeting whether it was his third or fourth year. And I don't know if that can be answered here, or should be answered here.
Yeah, typically, if there's a, a question about whether or not to non-renew after a third year of teaching, then there's, there are times when school districts and the teacher can, in, or the school district can grant that fourth year. So that's usually why it happens. You know, there could be some other circumstances. I don't know if they apply to Nate or anybody else that we've done this with, but if there's some exceptional circumstances where there was something different about that teacher's experience in a particular year, then that might be a reason as well.
Okay, and for that purpose, I think it might, it makes sense to put it off at least two weeks. I, I caution this board against becoming micromanagers and overseeing every aspect of what's going on in our district. We do need to trust our administrators, for the most part at least, and being in the fourth year of a probation and not getting renewed is a, is a warning flag. And, but if we would like to get more information on it, I could believe we might have another thing that we could talk about if we could get another personnel committee meeting in a couple of weeks.
I would like to respond to that, Mike. I will also caution the board to be very careful in ignoring when teachers and community members and family members reach out to us. So, yes, we want our administrators to make sound decisions, and we also want to support the people that are doing the work every day.
Right, absolutely.
So there's, there's two sides to that coin, and I want to be very clear that we're listening.
Right, and, and he brought up some points, valid points, at least concerns of, of what processes and procedures were implemented and followed, so that's something that we need to look into as well.
And, and in addition, it's, it's not his fault that administration was in and out of the observations, and it was not consistent.
Well, that, that goes back to what I said at our last meeting, that we're patchworking our processes together, and it's all very suspect and, and difficult to get an accurate picture of what is going on, a consistent picture of what's going on. In the committee meeting, I mentioned that for a long time, I've wanted to have a, a head of department, so somebody who would be there to help guide everything going on in that department, and then that person would be a part of that procedure. Heather Finnholm was her mentor, and, and Heather showed up for him. So I don't, I don't know, I don't know him, I don't know what all went on. That's why a little delay in, in acting on this isn't a bad thing. But, you know, we've got a, a patchwork system of doing things in this district out of necessity, and it's not the optimum way to do it, but it's the way we've been doing it, and we don't have a whole lot of choice in the matter. But I, I understand what you're saying, and I, I understand his concerns with the processes that, that went into the decision. And, and I think it's worth a little bit more viewing by the personnel committee, and if we can get a meeting together before the next board meeting, that would, I would be in favor of that.
And I think that's where I was coming from. I'm, I'm not here to second guess our administrative decisions all the time, but I feel like I just don't have enough information to make an informed decision today, and so I, I just, I appreciate perhaps entertaining two, two more weeks to get more information. I believe Arlen has a comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've struggled with this a little bit, and if I'm hearing this right, we could act on this yet at a, a future meeting. I'm not sure what the deadline is, but normally I don't want to step in the middle when administration has reviewed things, but wow, what a year to try to evaluate somebody, to put out a new math curriculum to students. And I, my understanding is- And I, my understanding is there was a lot of struggles by many teachers to deal with this new curriculum for math because it was different with the timing of things. And then you have situations where mentorship or guidance from administration is not really available the way maybe we would prefer it because of circumstances. And then you end up with three different evaluators. And from what I'm reading, and like I say, I haven't heard the district side on this, telling mixed messages of where to get help and what to do and what the goals and expectations are. And, and then what I really look at here is, I was aware of this already a week or two ago by somebody that stepped up to me and said, this teacher is a very good teacher. And then looking at what we've seen by many of people that I respect come forward and speak on Mr. Weiss's behalf causes me to really take a look at this and just say, what is the right thing? And I, I don't have the answers. If he's been on probation, I'm not quite sure why, and I want to be very cautious of putting somebody, making somebody tenure and not give us the option if there are issues. But I, I just think it looks like we missed a lot of steps in this whole thing this year. And so, and at the time, you could look at the other part. If it was probationary and we kept him on for another year, it didn't sound like that things were really that negative to terminate him a year ago. So I'm trying to get a grasp of handle on this. I would really be supportive of of having this come back to us a little more information in two weeks. However, if we have to vote tonight, I'm just not sure how I'm going to vote, but I really would have a very difficult time terminating Mr. Weiss with the information that I got in front of me on this end without the district coming back from the other direction and saying what was expected and what he didn't do.
By the way, if I could just jump in to make sure I didn't misspeak earlier. You know, I may have said that he's on probation or probationary status. And that's truly just, that doesn't mean that he was in trouble or was doing, you know, poorly. When I say probation or probationary, it means that he just hasn't received a tenure yet. So all teachers are probationary for their first three years of teaching in a Minnesota public school. So I just wanted to clarify that, just to make sure everyone is on the same page.
That's a really important clarification, Carsten. Thank you for that.
And Heidi wanted to.
Sure. I guess it raises a red flag when we have this amount of uncertainty regarding an employee. And three experienced evaluators have looked at this and come to the same conclusion. So my lens is for the students, if we have this amount of uncertainty. At this point, I want to be assured, and I think that's my primary responsibility, is that we have the best teacher we can in the classroom. But it does sound like the board needs some more information. So what would be the best motion to make at this point about moving this to the next meeting?
Yeah, I would either suggest tabling it or just no action at all. And then either one would trigger, you know, just a more careful review administratively with information being shared to board members.
Okay, I guess I'll just make that statement as a board member that I expect that the board will be seeing this again on the May 18th agenda with as much detailed background information as can be provided according to law.
I agree. I would just, just no action, I would recommend.
Yep.
Okay, so we don't need a motion. We don't need to formally table it. We'll just bring it back to our next meeting.
Sounds good.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, budget reductions. Carsten?
Yeah, this is another challenging topic. And so, you know, it will take our, some time to carefully look at this. For the past few years, actually, we've been looking at five-year finance projections. And they consistently demonstrate a need to make reductions of some sort after, you know, the five-year referendum plan completes. So we have a couple of options, assuming the assumptions are correct. One would be to wait and make more significant reductions in two, three, or four years. Or we could start making reductions now each year for a period of time. And I think the Finance Committee reviewed, you know, those possibilities. And felt, at least in the committee meeting, that we should, you know, take action now that, that is needed in order to protect our fund balance. At least that's my interpretation of the discussions we've had. And so tonight we have some recommended reductions. We also intend to implement a hiring freeze in some areas, such as custodial services, furloughs in some areas that are fee-based, such as community education programs, and reductions in other areas as appropriate. So tonight, we're looking at two different areas. First has to do with administrators. This needs to be done sooner rather than later. Because Beth Borgan is retiring as the Director of Student Support Services as of June 30th. So we need to figure out, you know, what to do because of her retirement. Currently, Beth oversees the work of Jess Whitcomb, who serves as the Curriculum Coordinator. And we would like to, or I would like to take those two positions and combine them into one position called the Director of Teaching and Learning. So it'd be going from two administrative positions down to one administrative position. It's ironic that I'm bringing this up because we just had a discussion about teacher evaluations and that's one of the things Beth Borgan helped us with. Is kind of overseeing the whole program and then she would step in to provide evaluations as needed. At the same time, when you're looking at five-year financial forecasts, we believe that we just, we need to take prudent action, you know, as appropriate. So that's kind of the first part of the Budget Reduction Plan. The second part has to do with potential reductions in support personnel. And I've been struggling with this for some time and consulted with the administrative team who, that really came up with a more reasonable compromise than what I had originally thought. And so initially, the suggestion is to have all Class 1 support personnel, Class 2 support personnel and including van drivers, and elementary media and technology paraprofessionals to be reduced by one hour per day for the next school year. I need to note, this is a really important note, that some of those hours will likely be reinstated after further analysis. And I'll give you an example. We have at least three people who are part of the support personnel group who provide special transportation services. We have two van drivers who have worked two eight-hour, you know, eight hours per day. We have another education assistant who actually works nine hours a day, a regular shift during the day, plus she supervises one of the first student routes. Because there's a medically fragile student on that route. You know, I need to verify this, but my assumption is that they'll be the first three people that will call to bring back those hours after, you know, we just double check assignments for next year. There are many others who are likely in the same spot. The, in addition, the recommendation is to reduce 60 hours per day of Class 1 support personnel and/or elementary media and technology paraprofessionals. And so if a typical person worked six hours a day, then we're talking about 10 employees. Class 1 support personnel include primarily general education paraprofessionals. Don't get me wrong, they do valuable work for our school district. There's no doubt about it. I will say that compared to many other school districts, we have more Class 1 support personnel than other school districts. So it's also kind of a question of rightsizing in that area. So, you know, to kind of, again, I'm, I can't promise that everyone would be brought back at the same number of hours. But I will say that in addition to possible reinstatement, there are other employment opportunities within the school district that they are eligible for. I gave you the one example earlier of the education assistant who supervises one of the bus routes. And as a result, she's working, I think, nine hours a day. So she gets overtime pay for everything over 40. And, you know, those options are available for about 28 different routes, 14 in the morning, 14 in the afternoon. So if some of these folks who might lose an hour are interested in those, that additional kind of work, we have the positions ready. You know, but it, you know, will take some interest from those folks as far as letting us know that they're interested in doing something like that in order for the whole thing to work. In addition, there are multiple student monitor positions that are either posted or will be posted throughout the district. And something that I, I thought of after I made, or after I posted this agenda item is that I'm very interested in looking at possibly having some of our special education assistants work as substitutes within the system. If we do that, then we could reduce the, the number of emergency subs that we need. So I need to pencil that out as far as how many we should have or could have. The number of hours, I need to work with the union about making those arrangements. But I'm very interested in that because it would really not only bring back some hours or positions for some of our existing employees, but it would also save some money in the, in the long run. And provide a critical service that our whole system needs. So anyway, you know, I'm sure there'll be lots of questions, which I totally understand. The recommendation is to eliminate the Director of Support Services position effective June 30th. Eliminate the Curriculum Coordinator position, also effective June 30th. And then one hour per day for, you know, the positions that I talked about, as well as an additional 60 daily hours of Class 1 support and/or elementary media and technology paraprofessional positions.
Arlen, do you have something you'd like to say?
Yeah, first I want to make it clear to everybody, in case the public's watching, I have a little bit of a conflict of interest because part of this involves, my wife is a paraprofessional. The way this proposed motion is worded, it covers four different items and bullet points. However, I would not be able to vote in good conscience on that motion if it's made with all those items. I guess it's up to the board what to do. The other thing, I want to be very careful, but I do want to make this statement. You have created a huge amount of angst in this district with this paraprofessional proposal going out the way it is. And I know that, yes, they maybe can come back and do other things, but I, we've seen the emails and everything and you put this out here, they may or may not be back here. The good paras may or may not be back here next fall. So I just urge everybody to be cautious on it. And yes, I see part of this plan that we're not going to replace a couple of positions, but I, I think we got to be very careful that we don't try to balance the budget on one group of employees. Mainly one group of employees. And I'm going to have to stay out of it from here on. It's a decision, whatever you want to do. If the motion gets split up, I'll vote on the portion of the motion that it can be on. If it's all combined, I will be abstaining from the vote. And any further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Arlen. I appreciate.
I think I could answer at least part of that. Certainly, I or we would never want to balance the budget on just one group of people. You know, we've had five or six years of budget reductions almost in a row. And we have looked at, at every inch of the school district as we make those reductions. The one reason that it's being brought up tonight is that we would like to make some decisions before the school year is over in terms of assignments. And identify those who are willing to be flexible in terms of, of how they work. Because we need to build that into their schedules for next year. And so our goal is to try to make as many of these decisions as possible before June 1st. That's the goal. With some of our other groups like community education, custodians, you know, and other areas, you know, we have more flexibility in terms of timing of making those decisions. So I'm not saying that those things are going to happen necessarily in those groups, but with teachers and paraprofessionals and most administrators, we do have the school year as sort of the timeline where we need to make those decisions.
Holly?
Thank you. This whole proposal together is confusing. When we eliminate Dr. Borgan's position and rename it something else, there are so many facets of her position that we have to be very careful on how we restructure. So my concern is that eliminating the Curriculum Coordinator's position in addition to eliminating Dr. Borgan's position is, I'm trying to understand we would eliminate two positions that were working on the same thing. And then tying that into the paras. As a teacher myself, and I couldn't do my job as a special ed teacher without paras, literally could not do my job without the support of the people that were instrumental in working with the kids. So this is a loaded, this is a loaded approach to some very serious moves we have to make. And I would like a little bit more clarification on why those three are together.
Those three?
Yeah.
You mean the Director of Support Services, Curriculum Coordinator, and then the Support Personnel?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. Really, I, I put them together because they all lead to budget reductions within the school district. So certainly we don't have to make them, or approve a motion that would lump them all together. You know, I think maybe what you're, one of the things that could be done differently would be to eliminate the Director of Support Services as one motion. And then, you know, consider reducing, you know, paraprofessional time or positions as another motion. And then we could wait on the Curriculum Coordinator position, you know, something like that. And that might be what you're talking about because you're, you know, suggesting that we need to make sure that all aspects of best positions are covered.
Correct. And eliminating a position that we just created last year because we were in such a need is concerning to me as well.
Yeah, again, you know, we will end up, you know, if everything was approved, the reductions as well as the HR plan, we would still have a Director of Teaching and Learning. We'd make some other adjustments, but that Director of Teaching and Learning would do the curriculum coordination for, for the school district.
But yet, the director that we have now couldn't do it?
Yeah, they had, you know, as we developed the, the plan, the administrative plan for years, you know, we've gone through different iterations. You know, it's clear to me that, that we have to address, you know, our budget situation in a thoughtful way. But we need, we don't want to wait two or three years, you know, to be forced to make more cuts, you know, in our process. So we need to make those reductions sooner rather than later. So that's why they're, they're at least being considered tonight.
Okay, I'm going to have a difficult time supporting this motion as it stands. And I would like to revisit it in a couple of weeks with different wording and with different understanding of what is actually going to be entailed with, with that job description. Because if, if the, the job With with that job description, because if if the this, the job we're eliminating now. Wasn't able to take on the the curriculum piece, but yet we're going to create another job where that job now takes on the curriculum piece. When we have just failed miserably in our rollout of our math curriculum. Um, it's it it causes all kinds of questions for me, Carson, and I know that. It's stressful in terms of the money and we don't know what kind of money we're going to have in the future. But we still cannot shortchange our students and our families. Because we're making rash decisions based on what we don't know. So we need to be extremely thorough on who is going to do what and very careful about. You, I I saw that you had some teacher leader positions, I, you know. I'm, you know, so I'm I'm still in the dark about that piece.
No, but I understand where you're coming from.
Thank you.
Jim, do you wanna chime in?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yeah, it's a very nice dialogue, good dialogue by uh Arlen and Holly and and uh all that. Uh, the only thing I kind of want to really. Chime in about as you stated was um, uh. I have to be the one, just kind of like Arlen said, the timing of the email that went out to the paras. Caught me off, caught me by surprise because it was Wednesday night at. Say eight, nine o'clock at night. I thought, wow, what a time to do that. Um, without some more thought into that, at least letting us know. Or uh, that so, and then the, we tr- we truly got some responses because of the the action of that email. Uh, and I'll agree with Holly there, the uh, the paras I know over the years and currently. See, some of these teachers couldn't do their jobs uh well as they do without the excellent work and dedicated work of the paras. Uh, to take, to eliminate some of our dollars, which I know we're, I've been saying for. Nine months, we're gonna, we have to do something because we're gonna be in the red. By year twenty twenty-two, I think it was twenty-three, whatever it is. Uh, and now we're gonna do this um, along with uh the district plan. Um, kind of brings you back to what I said at the last workshop where. I think you, uh, and I've shared this with Pam today was. Uh, I brought up having somebody. Under you to help take off some things, do some things that you currently are doing and spending time all over. Uh, because you're working on something, something else comes up, you have to take, or even do that, something else goes up. You know, having somebody under your direction to uh assist you, AKA, I'll just use the term assistant superintendent just for. So somebody understands that, people understand that. Um. So then I look and uh, um, your pricing on this uh. Uh, with Dr. Borgan or whatever is making a hundred and sixty, we're gonna put in somebody in that has never done this, probably never done this before. One thirty-five to one seventy, that to me could be some savings that. We're looking at as we pay. Why do we have to all, as I said before, why, you know, why are we always looking to the high end of things when? Let's look at what our needs are and dress those and get get you the help that I think you need because in the. Nearly a year and a half I've been here, uh. Uh, I haven't seen a great deal of change in that district on how they operate. They're still kind of hit and miss and going around. Um, so I just share that. Um, I just think uh, better. Way I think on the paras could have been handled differently and uh. I think we truly need them and we gotta look at some other ways to to uh bring in our costs and. Um, I'll I'll be quiet and listen now. So thank you for your time.
Yeah, and again, um, just a quick response. I appreciate the comments. Um, in terms of the communications. You know, I wanted to get it out um at right about the same time that the the packet was posted. Um, you know, it's sort of a, you know, which comes first kind of question. Uh, do we let the the education assistants know what the recommendation will be or do we let the board know, you know, like through posting the packet? So I'm not sure, you know, what a better way would have been in uh times of virtual meetings uh to get that uh point across. Uh, but the goal was to at least let people know that it was on the table. Uh, because I'm a believer in, you know, giving people the chance to write those emails, to participate on the call tonight. Uh, to voice their concerns, you know, that's, I just believe in that. So. Um, I wish I could have spoken with the uh, you know, each of the seventy-five paras uh one-on-one to let them know what. Uh, might be recommended, but that just wasn't um, wasn't possible. Uh, the uh, you brought up a couple of other good points, um, Jim, uh. Could you repeat what those other two comments or questions might have been? It'll come to me as we're we're talking too, so uh you can certainly ask the questions later.
Uh, I'd be good if I unkeyed my uh unlocked my mic so I you could actually hear me. I was having a great conversation with myself here for a minute, but nobody was answering me. So, uh, but my point is, uh, you know. Dr. Borgan's leaving at the end of June and we're gonna put somebody in there and the dollars we're projecting for that person who. May or may not be uh, uh, may probably be new to that area. We're gonna go. You know, we've, we're putting, we're putting some high dollars in there. Why don't we, why do we always have to look so high at? You know, ten to twelve thousand dollars a month. Uh, for salary and benefits or even more fif- or whatever, close to fifteen. Um, thirteen or fourteen thousand, you know. That's where the savings got to be on the high end, not not on the, I think on the para end. Where you're cutting a few hours here and there for a very needed service.
Yeah, or um, well, I would argue that that both are, all of them are needed services. Uh, yeah, I'm I'm glad you reminded me about the estimates. Um, the number I put in there uh is not a a firm price, it's an estimate. Uh, you know, I don't want to lowball uh everything that comes your way. Um, you know, I want to be open and honest about potential costs. Uh, it will totally depend on who we hire. Uh, we have a range for the position. And uh, I think I took kind of something middle of the road. Uh, if we have a, you know, somebody who's relatively new to teaching and learning, then it'd be on the low end. Um, if it was somebody who brought in exceptional experience and skills and knowledge and certifications and licensures. Then it might be higher than that too. So really, it's not a promise that we would spend that much. Um, uh, it depends on the person we hire.
Uh, Janie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I guess I just wanted to kind of bring us back to that beginning of the summary in the school board packet of the five-year projections and such. And I ca- I had a conversation with Carson earlier this week just about trying to understand. Um, some of the comments that were made in the workshop last week about. Having to make reductions, you know, every year or having to make a big chunk, you know, in two thousand twenty-three. Um, or whatever it is before the next referendum would have to go up to voters and. Um, to be honest, I, it really makes me nervous to have to make big cuts. And, you know, I think there's only a few of us left here on the board that have had to make some huge reductions and it's never. It's never fun. Um, and I know, you know, I'm, I appreciate that, you know, we're looking at kind of different departments here and. I guess I just wanted to bring that up about the finance thing. That's what I guess I I see this as. Um. You know, when I looked before, even in the finance minutes, it looks like we're we're underneath our expected student um. Numbers, right? And if I'm understanding that right, Carson, it looks like we're even below um. What we projected as far as budget, as far as the students that we currently have enrolled. Um, so I wanted to bring that up and I guess I just wondered how much we're even saving by um, you know, this. You know, I don't want to say it's a small action because it is affecting people's lives, but um, it is a one-hour reduction. Um, on some positions, is that correct?
Yeah, um, and as you said, uh, Janie, um, uh. You know, it's a big deal, you know, obviously, and um. Not only is it uh compensation, you know, for each of the para professionals who'd be cut, um. But also some would go beneath the threshold for health insurance. And all of it's painful, you know, people losing their jobs, uh, people losing, you know, compensation because of a reduction in in pay. Uh, but, you know, I'll tell you what, when I um, I'm, I know that there are some people who are going to go beneath that threshold and that that really hurts. Um, no doubt, along with those who are losing their their jobs overall, but really the plan does affect everyone. And um, you know, the the glimmer of hope, and again, I, I'm sorry for focusing on, you know, that angle. But literally we have thirty to forty hours that could be picked up, you know, by people. Uh, if they're willing to just adjust their, the time they start or the time they end. Uh, we have some, you know, if we have people who are flexible enough to serve as substitutes in. In different classrooms or in different buildings, I'm gonna work hard to make that happen. Um, and, you know, we we have other resignations and retirements that come our way every year, and so we're gonna look at that as well. Um, so, you know, the, you know, I, maybe I've been wrong for the last two years. But I thought I was getting a very clear message from each one of you. Uh, that we have to take our finances seriously. We have to make reductions uh when possible. So, um, you know, that that, I took the spirit of that uh in coming up with this list. I I don't enjoy doing this. This is, this hurts me. Um, but um, you know, I really think it's it's up to the board to decide, you know, where they want it financially. And we have to do that through negotiations. We have to do it through hirings, uh, how many positions we have and and sometimes unfortunately, it takes budget reductions to make it happen.
Answer then to that question about the students being, our student counts are down. Is that a fair?
Sorry, I I uh got off track there. Uh, yeah, we started the year uh with uh student enrollment. Uh, you know, we we thought our projections would be uh higher uh than what we use for the budget. Now we're slightly below. Uh, and of course, we'll have some additional uh kids who will have to be dropped because they're not participating or trying to participate in our. Distance learning plan. We're not the only ones who are facing that. Um, you know, and so, you know, some of our revenue will be impacted by that. Now, I I I need to say two things and I'm gonna sound like I'm arguing against myself. But I think it's fair to share this just to make sure all the cards are on the table. Um, you know, first, um, you know, COVID uh is leading to an odd. Situation where the general fund is actually benefiting because we can reduce a lot of our expenses. Uh, because we're not in school. Um, food service is benefiting financially, uh, you know, because the meal reimbursements are higher than the typical meal reimbursements. Uh, but community ed is really taking a thrashing. So. You know, tho- that's a factor in all of this. Uh, another factor is like uh what Heidi mentioned, um, is that we are going to receive some one-time money. Uh, that will help us uh fund like uh hotspots for our students, possibly some technology purchases. Uh, you know, and those kinds of things that kind of as a stopgap measure. Uh, so at least there are some, you know, two positive things financially uh for the general fund um. That are resulting from this horrible uh crisis. Uh, at the end of the day though, um, the five-year projections. Um, are um concerning. And again, you know, for the last two years, I've heard from almost every uh school board member that, you know, we have to take this seriously. We have to make the cuts and so. Um, that's why I'm I'm doing this now.
Heidi?
Thank you. Um. I guess I I'm looking at this globally. Um. I realize to me this is a systems approach, um, so it's not personal, obviously, it has an effect on personal lives. But I was trying to rethink this a little bit as far as the paras. Um, and I looked at, we're reconfiguring elementary classrooms uh regarding an alternative setting. So that to me. Indicates while we're making some changes, maybe the need. Uh, won't be the same as it was because we're we're, we're configuring our classrooms at the elementary level differently. And we'll have a dedicated para in there full-time um for those um alternate classrooms, alternative classrooms. Um, and and so I'm trying to look at the global picture and. You know, I agree with Carson, if we're shaving down an hour, there are going to be some where we're going to have to put back. There are other opportunities to pick up hours in maybe two, maybe three different ways. So I'm hopeful that this will all eventually balance out. Um, and then. I guess I have to really strongly reiterate, you know, the discussions we have at finance. You either start chopping a little bit here and and a little more next year. Um, to make the five-year plan float with the referendum. And then that's what we said was our reality before COVID. And now that we have this disease, I think we should be planning even a little more conservatively because the landscape. Is more uncertain than ever for funding. I mean, we had expected a sort of go-along two percent every year from the state and that's what we built our. Um, five-year referendum is plan on that assumption. And if that caves, and I'm pretty sure that it will, I think we're gonna be lucky if we get a one percent increase in the next biennium from the legislature. Um, we're, it's, it's going to significantly change. Our referendum plan because this will happen right in the middle of it. And so, um. I uh, I know we have some difficult decisions here, but I'm looking at this as a total package. Um, I think a lot of thought has been gone into press this lever, examine that lever, only move it this far or that far. Um, it's complicated. It's not an easy um picture to. Manage this across an entire system, but I believe that's the right approach and I'd like us to move forward with this.
Thank you, Heidi. Holly? Holly, are you there?
Yes, sorry, I was talking to myself. Um, listening to everybody, we need to put it all out on the table then. We have families that are experiencing success with their children being at home with them. That could decrease our enrollment. We have um Red Cottage Montessori who has decided that they're gonna make a run for a charter school. And we have some people in our district who think that's a good thing. And that's a problem. So if we're gonna put it all out on the table about how we are gonna manage our funds and who we're gonna cut, we need to look at everything. So we're not in a position right now to make this decision until this full board talks about everything that's on the table. But if we are facing a charter school popping up and we have conflicts of interest in our own, in our, in our own district. About what that could look like, then we need to put everything on the table.
Mike?
Yeah, I think um. These are exceptionally modest proposals for cutting our budget. Uh. Exceptionally modest. Uh, like Heidi says, the, the chances of our funding being uh. Not extended uh in the coming years is a serious threat. Uh. Uh, the chances of lo- of losing students to online learning, as Holly said, is a serious threat. It may not come through, but it's a threat. The Montessori school is a threat. We can either make modest reductions now and and and, and I'm sorry, it has to go to the. Paras uh for uh right now at this stage. But there's no, it it's either small cuts now or tremendous cuts later. It's it's. In the, in the lexicon of the day, it's flattening the curve. If we don't can keep our budget expenditures down now, we're going to have to cut our throats. To fill glasses and it's not going to be a pretty sight and it uh. Uh, to to think that we can put it off is a pipe dream. Uh, I think that Carson works very hard. He has, I I agree that we have been telling him that we need to watch our budget. We need to be very careful. We've been strong, we've been very strong. In in the finance committee about doing this. And uh. Uh, it's, it's something that needs to be done. We're a. We're a middling district. We we don't get a lot of uh. Funding from the state, uh, you know, the the people of Minnesota. Don't feel that education is worth funding. That's been clear for the past the twenty years. And it has drastically impacted the education system in the state of Minnesota. So we're working with what we have. And if you think we can put something off for a couple more years. Or even one year, you're just. for a couple more years, or even one year, you're just deepening the trench that we're digging. And we need to do this, move on. Nobody likes cutting jobs, nobody likes getting cut, nobody likes limiting their hours, nobody likes limiting people's hours. But we're trying to balance a budget and maintain a certain amount of, of breathing room for even more drastic things that may be coming our way. And if the past is any indicator, there's plenty more drastic things that are coming our way. There's no chance that we can put this kind of uh, minor adjustment to uh, to next year's schedule uh, on hold, and, and benefit from it. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Mike. Heidi, you're next, and?
Yeah, so I, I think to add to the conversation, we have some timing issues. Number one, we're making these decisions now about positions either being created or diminished so that we can go, but, and we need to make those decisions because we need to go out in a shrinking talent pool and find some of these people. And we can't put off the hard decisions much longer because every week we put it pat, pu- push it away, we're losing opportunity to find um, the people we need to fill the spots that we are going to agree to. Um, second, this district by statute, state statute, needs to approve a budget by June 30th. That's why we need to make these decisions. And we, so, I, I, I'm ask, reminding the board that those are the deadlines in front of us, and we have to know what we're working for, w- working with. And um, I know these are tough, but there's a reason why they're on the agenda when they are, and you need to take that into ser- serious consideration too. Thank you.
Good point, Heidi. Holly?
I think you're on mute, Holly.
Yes, I was. Um, when we say we have to be equitable and we have to take into consideration where our students are at and what they need to succeed, but yet we say things like we have to cut the people that are on the front lines with our students every single day, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm really struggling with this. From, from what I understood from this with the cuts in terms of the paras, from what I understood with my conversation with Carson earlier, i- it, it wasn't that we were cutting people and that they were gonna lose benefits. So I'm sorry, I was confused on that. And then to say that we have a shrinking talent pool, uh, Heidi, I'm, I'm not so sure what that means. We have um, a tremendous amount of, a talent pool in our own district where people are rising to the occasion every day that they're not getting noticed. And so, this whole proposal right here to me, like I said, we have major things that we have to discuss as a board before we can make this decision. Maybe, you know, calling each one of us individually and asking us what we think has worked in the past, but if we have things like we just said coming up, we need a broader conversation, and this should be put off for at least two weeks, budget or not.
I think one of the things that I, that needs to be said, and I know we've said it in many different ways tonight, but we love our paras. This is not about not valuing para jobs or the wonderful support that they give to our kids. Um, we will always do the right thing um, as best we can for our kids, right? We're, we all believe in that, uh, or we wouldn't be here on this call, we wouldn't be on the school board, we wouldn't work for a school district. We believe very deeply that we will always do the best we can for kids. And we have a budget that we have to work within. And so, we have to constantly be weighing those things out. It is um, the hardest part probably um, about being on the school board is these kinds of decisions. Um, I see a number of paras on this call, and I am talking to all of you. I'm looking at your beautiful faces and some of your ceilings. Um, and we love you, please, please believe me when I say that. Um, for the vast majority of people, that we will have to um, eliminate their jobs, there will be jobs for you, important jobs. Um, and so, I don't want you to feel discouraged. Uh, it's hard to, to say the, that conver- say that phrase and then know that this is one of the most difficult decisions I've had as um, on my time in, in the school board. So, just know that we value you, we love you, we appreciate you, and um, like Heidi said, we are looking at a different model for a, a good number of classrooms in our district. And so, I think one of the ways that we can think about and conceptualize this change is that while we're changing up the classroom in how we're going to be teaching kids with this co-teaching model, there is places for you to work and be on the front lines and to do the best uh, for kids. That is our goal, always. Um, and so, I just encourage you, even though this is a difficult decision, it is not, um, it's not the end, it's, it's not the end of the conversation, right? There will be jobs, there will be, for as many of you as that we can have out there that will fit into the budget. So, that is my uh, promise to you, is that we will do as much as we can to keep you active and engaged in helping our students do the very best that they can. Um, because I've said forever, um, the personnel committee, uh, my fellow committee members are gonna laugh at me when I say this, but I'm a broken record when I say recruiting and retaining our great staff is my number one top priority next to educating our children. And we know that you are cream of the crop. And so, um, my promise is that we will do the very best we can to balance these two big needs that we have here in keeping our staff, but also in balancing our budget, and I hope I make sense in what I'm trying to say there. Anybody else have something that they'd like to share about this, before we move on?
Yes, unless somebody else wants to speak.
Go ahead, Holly.
Um, just in thinking about this, you know, somebody is saying, why don't we cut more fat at the top? We're not very fat at the top, but I understand what they're saying. So what Jim said is, why are we looking at the high end? Why don't we try to balance it with something in support, um, in a different capacity? That I would be open to, but I'm tend, I, I, I'm tending to think, Jim, you're on to something.
Holly, the same reason they, you can't balance a budget on the, on the top is because there's so few of those people, and there's so many more of the people who make lower. That's why it's so hard to raise taxes on the highest paid because there's so few of them, and there's so many who don't make as much, but altogether, they generally add up to more revenue than, than the highest percent, unless you were really to dig them. And so trying, trying to eliminate administrative positions or limit administrative positions would, could, could be uh, cutting off your nose to spite your face.
I disagree. We spent seven years on our last curriculum coordinator.
In the position where you need some serious competence.
We spent, we spent over a million dollars on our last curriculum coordinator, and we got stuck.
So that was a bad investment.
A mi- over a million dollars, and we're talking about budget problems, and we got stuck. So I don't, you know?
They're still doing a job, weren't they?
I don't know.
Yeah, I would think they were.
Based on what I've seen that they've produced, and what we've been able to produce, produce on that, no. I'll have to disagree with you very gently.
Well, so it was a bad investment then, but uh, but it's, there's just not that much money at the top to shave off.
But we need to be responsible to that bad investment, Mike.
We do, we do try to be, we do try to be.
Then we need to talk about it more.
But it's an administrative decision, although, I mean, what would, what would you not have?
I don't know, there's, there, what I, what I am trying to say is, on this vote right now, as we're talking, we're not ready. That's what I'm trying to say.
For the, for the, for the singular position, or for all of it together?
All of it together.
And we talked about maybe breaking those things out into a couple of different motions. One would be the Director of Support Services position to be eliminated, that's one. And then, another motion would be to eliminate one hour per day of all class one support personnel. That would be two. And then we, we mentioned maybe holding off on eliminating the curriculum coordinator position. Does anybody wanna make a motion on one of those pieces?
Can I make a motion to hold off on all three?
No, you can't.
Why?
Because we need, we need to, to act now in order to avoid deeper cuts in the future.
She, she, we can wait for a second if she makes a motion.
Well, I, she asked, I answered.
I'd like to.
Yeah, thank you both for that clarification. Um, I don't feel we're prepared to make this decision tonight based on the feedback we got from the community, and so, I would like to make a motion to postpone this for two weeks and have us workshop it.
Could you uh, clarify what you mean by workshop it?
Yes, I think that the board needs to talk about this together in a workshop setting.
Like into weeks or before the two weeks period?
Before the two weeks.
Gotcha, okay.
Thank you.
Second. Well, it's not like we're doing anything else, is it?
I disagree with that, I just think we need to make a decision on this tonight, and I'm supportive of unfortunately having to make these reductions. I just believe it has to be done, and this is probably only the beginning of many due to what uncertain times we're in and where our budget is. And I wish our budget would hire, was higher, but it is not, and I think the facts show that.
What Janie said. But a motion has been made and a second.
Uh, any more discussion on the motion at the, on the table, which is to um, bring this to a workshop and are you, was it, what was the motion, it's not to table?
Yeah, I think it was to delay the um, a decision for two weeks, and in the meantime, have a, a motion to discuss. I think that was the, the, the essence of the motion. Lisa will, will make sure she gets the exact wording.
To have a workshop.
Okay, so delay the decision and workshop this, and come back in two weeks to make a decision.
So, so I, I just wanna again say, we're willing to cut people's jobs right now, tonight, and not give it the two weeks when we've had this much community outreach. I just wanna reiterate that.
Um, well, I, I don't have any problem delaying a, a decision for two weeks. Uh, we did that with one person just earlier um, for a non-renewal, and I, I see both sides of this. I mean, I do think that we need to act, but I don't think that delaying it by two weeks is going to um, hurt a whole lot. Um, this is a big, big, big decision, and if we can have more discussion around it, and um, I think that that's okay. Um, the motion on the table is to delay a decision and workshop this within the next two weeks. Holly made that motion, and Jim seconded it. Um, any other discussion about what's on the table?
This is what I was talking about, about micromanaging. So, it's, it's a bad habit that's growing in this district. And uh, you know, I, I understand the hesitation, I understand the, the idea that we've had a lot of community input. Uh, the vast majority of it was people whose jobs would be affected, and that's only to be expected. But uh, to put it off, when are we gonna have our workshop? When are we all gonna get together and have a meeting on, on discussing these items? Um, it's, you know, we've been talking about it for, for months.
No, we haven't, COVID just came up a month ago. We have not been talking about this for a month, for months, COVID just came up.
The, this is not, not related to COVID. This is related to controlling our budget in the coming years so that we can continue on with our plan, which is in danger as it is because of COVID. This is pre-COVID balancing of our budget, rightsizing as they call it.
And we're cutting people's health benefits. So again, we need time to talk this through.
We're not a, we're not a taxing entity, we're not allowed to raise revenue on our own.
We're employers of, of many people in the community.
Holly, what extra information are you looking for at a workshop?
Um, well, that can be determined as we all get together and talk about it, but right now, like I said, with all of the things that we're faced with, I just got two messages from people about Red Cottage Montessori trying to open up a charter school.
So what are you gonna do about that?
I wanna talk to you guys about it, which is what a board member should wanna do.
What does that have to do with that, this decision though? How does that relate to this?
It's, this is all wrapped into one decision.
Th- this is a, this is a, a small.
Well, I've already made my motion, so you can, you can agree or disagree, but I'm just saying, on the backs of people.
That's how it always is in this business.
Well, determining on how this motion goes, Holly, can you, after the vote happens, can we just make sure that we do get the information that you need? Cause I think it is important that every school board member obviously has information that they need to make an, you know, a vote and to feel confident in what has to happen. So I guess I would just encourage that, that we need to be specific about what we need.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay, so the table, or the motion on the table is to delay the decision and have a workshop within the next two weeks, come back at our next board meeting for a decision. Any further discussion on that? Any more discussion? Although, okay, so I will call a roll call vote, starting with Ms. Jones.
No.
Ms. Tower?
Yes, I'm agreeing to my own motion.
Chair votes aye. Ms. Fair?
No.
Mr. Christensen?
No.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
And Arlen, are you voting or abstaining?
Uh, I can vote on this one, no.
So we have four noes and three yeses. So we will not delay the decision to workshop it. Which brings us back to, does somebody else have a motion that they'd like to move forward?
May I just make a statement, Madam Chair?
Please.
The reason I voted no is because of the workshop for two weeks. I would support, if anybody makes a motion to just set this back for a decision two weeks from now, I would vote yes on that, but I am not in favor of another workshop to discuss this, we did a workshop on it, so, just put that out there.
I'll make a motion to, let's see, you should read it, huh? And to approve the reductions as stated in the uh, eliminating the Director of Support Services, the curriculum coordinator position, the one hour per day of all class one support personnel, class two support personnel, et cetera, and sixty daily hours of class one support personnel.
Second, Heidi Jones.
Any more discussion? All right, then we will have a roll call.
Madam Chair, I, I just, for Carson, and I don't have the handbook in front of me. Carson, today, and then July 1st. Carsten, today and then July first, and you're in your absent, who's second in command?
As of July first?
As of today and as of July first.
You know, it's not uh, um, typically what I would do like in a a crisis situation or if I needed someone to uh, step in, it would probably be Beth Borgan currently uh, because of her experience, her licenses, you know, that kind of thing. Um, you know, as uh, you know, she's retiring June thirtieth. So starting July first, it depends on who uh, is in district level positions, so. And this is all I'm making assumptions here that may not hold out, but if we had um, a licensed principal as a director of teaching and learning, uh, then my guess is that that person uh, would be the second um, in command. Uh, if the person's not licensed as a principal, then I would probably rely on a principal, a building principal, uh, the logical person there, and I've I've not talked to to George about this, but he'd be the logical person just because we we share a building, so. Uh, but really it could be another principal as well.
That's a very long answer to a very short question, so that's my point is we don't have a direct, we don't have that whole lineup in the district to support you and others around, so that's why I I bring that up and and uh, that's why I think we're missing the point, and we can discuss that later if if when we need to do that, so apparently that's it's not gonna, my point isn't being made or gonna be whatever.
Well, I think I I answered your question directly. It was verbose. Um, but it depends on who is hired, you know, um, as a director of teaching and learning. Depends on if that person's licensed as a principal or not. So if the answer is yes, then that person would likely be it. If the answer is no, then it would likely be George.
Yeah, I understand. Jim, I think Jim, I think your question brought up uh, or illustrates the patchwork that we have in this district of trying to make do with what we have. It's it's a it's a great weakness in the district, and it's also a bit of a strength in that we can, you need to fix that life.
Yeah, I got, it comes on every time I got a brave idea, so.
It's a it's an indication of the weaknesses and the and uh, of our district, and it's also a part of the strength in that this district pulls together to work with each other uh, when when we need to. And it's 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 a it's a problem when uh, when decisions that we have to make that are not decisions uh, that we are personally trying to affect people with are brought up as as attacks on certain sectors of our employees. It is far from that. We are responsible for the budget. We're responsible for for the entire community that supports our district. And that's who we're working for, not just the people who work for us.
It's the only organization I've ever been belonged to that nobody really knows who's second in the command, so. I think that's that speaks for itself what I my question was and the answer, so thank you.
I agree.
I agree as well.
All right, so Mike has made the motion to eliminate the following as stated in the agenda packet, the the elimination of the Director of Support Services Curriculum Coordinator, one hour of Class One support personnel, Class Two per support personnel, et cetera, sixty daily hours of Class One support personnel. All of the verbiage is in your packet. Does anybody want me to read all of that?
No.
Nope.
All right, so the motion is made by Mike.
Sorry, sorry, Madam Chair, I was on mute. Yes, please read it all.
Okay, I move to eliminate the following. One, Director of Support Services position effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Two, the curriculum coordinator position effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Three, one hour per day of all Class One support personnel, Class Two support personnel and elementary media and technology paraprofessional positions effective for the next full year. And number four, sixty daily hours of Class One support personnel and or elementary media and technology paraprofessional positions effective for the next school year. Any further discussion? Okay, then I will take a roll call vote on that motion, starting with Ms. Tower.
No.
Chair votes no. Ms. Fair?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
No.
Mr. Derrick's?
Abstain.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
So that's three votes aye, three votes.
No.
Nay. Okay, well, we've never had a tie like that before.
I think we have.
Okay, now what? We table it?
I think if you look under Robert's Rules of Order, you'll probably find uh, I could be mistaken here, but the motion fails because it didn't pass. But you may want to look at that.
I think you're right.
Yeah, I don't think there's, yeah, definitely the the motion failed, uh, so the the next issue will be something else.
Madam Chair?
Oh, go ahead, Arlen. Go ahead.
I think the motion failed because of the pause. I would like to make a motion that we bring this back to the May eighteenth board meeting.
For what reason? If it's already voted down?
Well, I thought maybe somebody changes. Nobody seconded it, we're good.
Here we go. Here's what I'm looking for.
I'll second that, but I would just like to hear from Carson kind of what timeline we're on, you know, and kind of going again on Holly's like more details made, like I guess what can we add to the conversation on May eighteenth to um, come to a you know, actually have a a motion succeed on this, like what do people need or what are we going to have more on the eighteenth that's not here tonight?
Right, good question.
And Carson, just, you know, I'm not, I know you're, we're, it's hard to do these virtual meetings, but like what, again, is there will two weeks really delay anything? I mean, I do think that you're hiring for those admin positions, so do those two need to be almost separated from the paras?
You know, um, I'm not as worried about the um, the admin, the district level admin position. Um, you know, that can wait a little bit. Um, you know, the 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 key issue is paraprofessionals, uh, because first they need to plan their lives regardless. And then second, um, you know, if their hours are going to be reduced, we want to give them the chance to request the additional hours on the special or the special transportation routes. So um, you know, it gives us a little administrators and uh, support personnel a little bit less time, you know, to make those arrangements. We'll do whatever is possible. Um, but that those would be the two negatives. And by the way, I'm I'm scurrying around here looking for a power cord for my second computer, so if you see me walking around, it's not because I'm disinterested, I just need to find a power source.
Well, and I guess I, you know, I would be supportive of this, just in the aspect of maybe this does, you know, if we're not on a a full time scale of having to do this, maybe it gives some of us more time and pairs time to get more information about what this individual, how this individually affects them. Um, and then specifically what extra opportunities there are for for more hours and more jobs so that they can look at what um, meets their skill sets, um, you know, but I I do, you know, a decision has to be made. That's why I'm a little hesitant in that matter of, you know, that's why for those of you that were opposed to the motion, I just want you to speak on what you need.
I'll I'll speak up. I I I think the whole district plan is not meeting our needs for a year and a half. I I've been, you know, I've seen what I've spoken up as to what we need. I think we, you know, we're missing the point. Yeah, maybe it costs a little bit of money, but down the road it should save us some. We just got a list from uh, Jackie on consultants that is kind of all over the board. I think we need to, you know, the plan doesn't to me, a reorganizational chart is where you look and you can actually see where everybody's at. This plan just kind of lays out just different things that are hard to follow. As for the motion that failed tonight, I believe under Robert's rules, the motion hat can come back if one of the noes say ask for it to be reconsidered, or a new proposal could be brought back to the next meeting as to what could be done. But you can't make a motion to bring back a motion that already failed without the people that failed uh, asking that to be reconsidered, so. I mean, if if Carson wants to put something together or seek input in the next week or so, what we're looking for and put something together, that might be beneficial, but in the meantime, you can't bring back a motion that failed just because you don't, because it failed.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that let's have that discussion now so that we know what to compile regardless of what the motion looks like.
Yes.
Um, you know, another option is just for us just not to bring any for anything forward on May eighteenth. So you know, that's also a possibility, but one one way or the other, it'd be nice just to decide that now. I mean, are you looking for budget information? Are you looking for um, five-year projections?
Again, I could just say a workshop would be helpful. Trying not to sound sarcastic, but I think it would really be helpful.
I think we can get our work done within a meeting. I mean, we've we've plowed a lot of ground here. Um, Carson, let's let's put out five-year projections because I I think that helps uh, with a visual to understand how quickly the line goes down and and um, why why the finance committee keeps saying we needed to make sensible incremental cuts, not a a jumping off a cliff, um, because we want to build what's sustainable. Um, so I would I would offer that that would maybe help clarify um, the decision-making timeline.
I'm going to add that tonight Jim asked for a breakdown of what we spend on consultants, and does anybody on the finance committee know specifically right offhand what we spend on consultant fees and attorney fees? Without Jackie giving you the information.
Uh, no, I think Jackie would be the one to uh, get that information for Carson.
Those are the kinds of things that we're talking about. We spend a lot of money and we it it's imperative that we are clear where every dollar goes.
Okay, so we had the uh, the review of our special ed. Those guys were were uh, consultants.
I'm just saying, we don't
You're you're micro-managing, Holly. You're micro-managing. You're not
You're micro-managing me, Mike, and you need to stop. I don't appreciate it.
I will if you will.
Okay, so how about if we get the five-year projections for the next meeting so that we have a good, clear understanding of where we're headed and why we need to make cuts the way we do? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay. So as of right now, the motion was a tie and then you said it failed.
The motion is to bring this back at the mat, there's a motion in second to bring this back at a May eighteenth meeting.
Yes, seconded by Janie. That's what I have recorded.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other discussion? Bring it back in two weeks with more information.
So what was the motion? I am, I'm confused because the motion failed. I'm just motion is to bring back something or bring the by five-year plan that that Heidi asked about.
So who made that original motion?
I made the motion to bring this backward to the May eighteenth meeting.
And I seconded.
And when we bring it back on the eighteenth, we want a five-year projection.
But I think the motion has to I think the motion has to stay that because the first motion, if if I'm right, Arlen is asking to bring back something that just failed. So if he changes it to something else, then we could vote on it, but I don't think you can bring, make a motion to bring back a mo failed motion just because it failed, so.
I thought the motion tied.
Yeah, under Robert's rule, a motion that was made to pass something that tied is a failed motion.
Right.
Okay, good to know.
I'm just, I didn't make the rules. I'm just reading, that's all.
It's good some of us have it right in front of them.
I don't have it. I can have it memorized from my other
I had to look it up, too. So can we be more specific on in that motion instead of saying bring it back for May eighteenth? We need something more specific. Is that what I'm hearing?
How about we bring it back, we bring back the motion in two separate motions. One for the Director of Curriculum and what's the other one?
Director of Support Services?
Correct. As one motion, and then a second motion uh, on the Class Ones and Class Two Support Personnel uh, cut in hours. And why is the sixty hours a separate motion? Are those those are job cuts as opposed to hourly cuts?
Yeah, there were uh, both of those bullet points relate to uh, support personnel, so I uh, put them as together as one motion. I didn't want to put it all as one bullet point because it gets so complicated.
Well, let's complicate things then. Uh, make it uh, make it three motions. Make the hourly cuts a motion and the uh, the job cuts a motion and the uh, the administrative positions together a motion. Does that work? How's the court doing?
If my motion is out of order, I will be happy to withdraw my motion.
Thank you, Arlen.
Well, I guess I'd just like to add
You're out of order.
I I just like to add, if we move to the next agenda item, I'm not sure I can approve a human resources plan until I see some reductions.
I was just going to say that, Heidi, like this goes right into the next agenda item.
Well, and that's why I thought we had asked the superintendent after our last workshop for reductions and how we were going to pay for the priority ones that were needed for our district to
Right.
run our kids, so um, I did, I do want to throw out, I mean, would it help at all, and I don't know if this is out of order, but um, to separate these three right now and at least get some of these admin things taken care of? Or is that all the concerns also with the HR plan?
My concern is also with the HR plan.
Um, I would I would definitely uh, Carson, what do you think? This is
You know, I'm just writing down something. Uh, what if, and I, this would have to be a friendly amendment or a separate amendment, but if Arlen and Janie agreed to bring back a comprehensive eight human resources plan, including potential reductions to the next meeting?
That's probably the clearest way to do it yet, if you want to bring it back.
Arlen, is that acceptable to you? Because I'll second that or I'll
I'm okay with it, I guess, although I'd like to say I'd be happy to withdraw the motion. If you want it that way, I'm good with it. So if you're good with it, Janie, we'll we'll both agree to the amendment.
Yes, I will agree to it also.
Clarification.
Carson, can you read that one more time, please?
Okay, next time I'll turn on the ceiling light here so I can see it. Um, uh, to to bring back a comprehensive human resources plan, including potential reductions to the May eighteenth including potential reductions to the May 18th meeting.
Made by Arlen, seconded by Janie. Any other discussion on that?
I'll just say that that covers what you're asking for, Janie, right there, what you just stated. It doesn't list anybody that we're looking at reduction. We're looking at the whole plan reduction, what we should be doing, but the other one specifically named some people or some groups, so.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, we'll go take a roll call vote. Ms. Fair?
Hi.
Mr. Christensen? Mr. Christensen?
You're on mute, Mike.
Uh, I'll, I'll say aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye, I'll vote for that.
Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Nay, because I would still like a workshop.
And Chair votes aye. So it passes six to one. So we will bring back a comprehensive plan in two weeks. While it's a very hard discussion and it's been a long one, I appreciate all of the comments that were made here. It's, it's hard to have this kind of rhetoric going on and I definitely think that it's worthy of discussing more in the next two weeks and coming back. So thank you. Is there anything you want to add to a human resources plan right now, Carson? On the next item on the agenda?
Let me see. I lost my computer access, so it's going to take just a second.
You were proposing that we authorize all your priority ones for the human resource plan.
Yeah, I'm going to see if there's something we can do now. Well, I guess one thing that I would like to do is to go ahead with hiring a Burnside Elementary Principal, unless there are board members who are concerned about doing that. It's a cost-neutral thing and obviously we want to try to get a principal in before the end of the school year. But if you want to look at everything together, then we can certainly hold off on that as well.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, go ahead.
What's the interview process for that principal?
Well, unless I hear otherwise, I'm assuming that we'd follow what we've typically done in the past in terms of me doing screening work and then having a group of stakeholders together to make a recommendation of the board. That's what I'm assuming. However, for the high school principal, you know, there is a different suggestion that was put in place. And I'll do whatever the board wants. I just need a direction because I don't think we should be, you know, waiting too long to make this decision. I'm open either way or any of those ways.
Well, I think in the past, we have had a, what you've just said, Carson, having a group of stakeholders, I think that's the right thing to do to weigh in and make sure that several voices are heard and people have several different avenues are covered, parents, community members, other staff members and a board person. That's the, that's what we've done in the past. That would be my recommendation for this hire as well. Heidi, did you have something?
Yes, I'd like to see us move ahead with this decision on the Burnside Principal. As I said, we're competing with many other districts for personnel. I mean, if it happens to be some, somebody internally, fine. But we always post externally to maximize our, our pool of candidates. So I would make the motion that we go ahead and authorize the superintendent to hire the Burnside Principal slash Tower View Principal, seeing as it is a cost-neutral proposal, following the process we have employed in the past, which was the key, the stakeholders group and the superintendent screening.
Are you making that?
Yes, that's a motion.
And I'm willing, I'm just wondering Heidi, if you'd be willing to make a friendly amendment to not include the Tower View Principal part of it?
Oh, okay.
Just because Sherri Johnson suggested an option that, you know, would be cost-neutral as well, but that they would provide some services. I know Arlen had suggested that maybe about a week ago. You know, so if we could at least hire a Burnside Principal with possible Tower View duties, you know, or something like that would be, give us a little more flexibility.
Sure, I, I'll agree to change that to just Burnside Principal with flexibility.
I'll second that.
Okay, Jim, you had a question.
Yeah, I brought this up when we did the high school principal one. You mentioned Madam Chair, staff. I struggle with somebody being able to pick their, be on the interview committee for somebody that's going to be their boss. So I caution you to find out, find the right people that probably wouldn't supervise somebody that's on the board, that's on the interview panel. Or in that case, either we had somebody that was even a reference or keep, keep the opportunity away from somebody being a reference on the panel beside, and a staff member that the person may be supervising.
But I think we include those key stakeholders within the building, Jim, so that there's some staff buy-in, so that they can act, the current staff would be able to ask, you know, to listen to those responses from the interview candidate. They don't create the questions, we just listen to the responses. I think it would help with staff buy-in, which I think is very critical at that building site right now. So I think that's a positive to having people there. I, I think I can agree with you on the reference piece, though.
Well, I think on the, on the last one, we, I talked to somebody that was on the interview panel that would report right to a principal and I just thought that was unheard of or unnecessary. There's plenty of people out there. I get to sit there and listen to them and maybe offer some, but not be in the decision-making or the recommendation process.
So the motion is to move ahead with hiring a, or going ahead with the hiring of a Burnside Elementary Principal with possible duties at Tower View. Made by Heidi, seconded by Mike, any other discussion?
Yes, Carson, can we hear some more on what Sherri has communicated with you? Or is that something we can't hear right now?
She mentioned the possibility that of her, the person in charge of the principalship duties at River Bluff could also serve in the capacity as a Tower View Principal. Then we'd have one person kind of overseeing both programs. So there are pluses and minuses to it. You know, the plus is, I think, is that it streamlines. We have one contact person for both alternative learning programs. The negative is that we're letting GCD take over that responsibility and so we don't have as much say in decision-making, I presume.
Isn't Tower View our school?
Well, that's a complicated issue, very complicated. The students are actually River Bluff or GCD students.
Okay.
But the staff members are our staff members. And that would include the principal, teachers, as well as specialists.
What about the rent?
The, you know, we, I, Jack would have to answer exactly who pays it directly, but you know, we pay probably at least 90 or 95% of the rent.
Okay, yeah, I just was, just wanted some clarifiers around that. Again, it seemed confusing based on that special ed report that we got that stated things are confusing. So I'm just, just putting that out there.
Yep, and you're right. Certainly having multiple players in the same sandbox, you know, can be complicated and frustrating at times. You know, I will say though, that our, our Tower View program is, is going really well. And so despite the complications, it seems to be in good shape. So either way, it can be complicated.
Yeah, no, I didn't mean that Tower View was confusing. What I meant was the delineation of Good Hugh County Ed Services and Red Wing Public Schools and who's in charge and what's the flow chart.
Correct.
That's, that's the piece that I meant that was confusing. Much like piecemealing gets confusing because it changes often. So is that another, is that another attempt at piecemealing something? Or is that something that the board should discuss? That's just kind of my questions, thank you.
Yeah, and just a quick response, I, I think it's going to be complicated regardless of which way we do it. So, you know, I don't know if it's going to be easier or harder. It will just look different. And, you know, if we could do something where it doesn't cost us anything, but it would free up the Burnside Principal or other administrators to just focus on their jobs and it's, I think, probably something that we should consider. But I do like.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I was going to say, I always go back to Good Hugh County Ed. Their district is not in the red like we are on a regular basis. So I just want to make sure that we also keep that at the forefront.
Yeah, and of course, you know, co-ops don't go into the red because they can assess whatever they need to, to stay out of the red. You know, they charge, you know, membership or they charge participating school districts based on their membership and their programs. So if they're running short one year, they can increase it by a certain percentage or by a certain, you know, prorated factor.
Perfect clarification, thank you.
Okay, are we ready to vote?
No, Arlen's up.
Oh, sorry, Arlen, I didn't see that, sorry. Go ahead, Arlen.
Just to make a statement, when I came on the board here five years ago, Jaleen Raymond through the Good Hugh County Ed District was the principal at Tower View. And then that was when we went through the budget cuts and other changes on the Ed District, Beth Morgan became the principal at Tower View. The second year, I believe, I was on the board. So it's been done both ways since I've been on the board.
Right.
Okay, anybody else?
And our district hasn't been in the red for many years. But we have the danger of falling into that category. But we haven't, we haven't been operating in the red for years other than spending down our acquired balances.
Thanks for that distinction. All right, so the motion is to hire a Burnside Elementary Principal with possible duties at Tower View, made by Heidi, seconded by Mike. I will call the vote. Mr. Christensen, we'll start with you.
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
No, seems unclear.
Chair votes aye. Ms. Fair?
Aye.
Passes six to one. Okay, thank you.
You know, I think the other things could wait until two weeks from now in the HR plan.
Do you need a Director of Teaching and Learning?
No, I think that's part of the, well, yes, we, we need that, you know, that work to be done. But I really think that's part of the, the HR plan discussion, at least from, I took from the discussion today.
Okay. Then the next agenda item is future topics and upcoming meetings. We've got our next virtual school board meeting on May 18th at 6:00 PM. I believe your legislative and policy is meeting at 4:45. And then following that, the following, next workshop would be Memorial Day, but that obviously is not going to happen. So we would meet on Tuesday, the 26th, 4:45 for finances and 6:00 PM for our workshop. Those are the next meetings I have. Anything else anybody wants to add to that for the?
Don't forget the next meeting tonight and maybe you can explain.
Yes, yep. And so following this meeting, we will adjourn and we will be re-adjourning in a closed session to do a superintendent evaluation. It is the mid-year evaluation, which we will be discussing. And there will be a public summary forthcoming on that.
Yeah, and by law, it has to be presented at the next regular meeting, so that would be on May 18th.
Yep, thank you. Okay, so we're going to, I'm going to, in just a minute, ask for a motion to adjourn. It's 8:47. Let's have a stretch break and I want us to all be back on to the next meeting by 8:55.
Sounds good.
Okay, so a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Made by Janie, seconded by Mike, roll call vote. We'll start with Mr. Bryant.
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Janie, Fair?
Aye.
And Mr. Christensen?
Aye.
Okay, we'll see you at 8:55.
By the way, I sent you a different link. So, you know, check out your email or your calendar invite and there'll be a different meeting invite.
Okay, thank you.
Arlen, you look entirely too relaxed.